Seeing at seven o'clock, I'd like to call meeting order. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just for all.
Thank you all for coming tonight. We have a nice agenda with some first presentations from some great students. They'll be coming along in a few minutes. We'll let you guys relax for a bit. Okay, item one A is I'd like to get a motion to approve the minutes from May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four and May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four regular meetings. And so we wanted to make one motion for both.
One motion for both.
Okay, Mark's making a motion to accept, finish on both. Any others?
Second.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Lisa has a second. I'll let's write you down there. I recommend. Okay, any discussion or comments, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four and March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, extensions, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Item one B, any additions to the agenda? Item one C, good evening, comments from visitors regarding agenda items? Anyone like to make a comment regarding what's on the agenda tonight? Actually, a part of the agenda. Maybe someone will comment after, hopefully. Okay. Item two, chairperson's report. My first part of report is saying we are almost at the end of the year. Graduation's Wednesday night. We've had a successful year here at East Granby and we're looking forward to good weather for graduation Wednesday night. I'd also like to say, I know we talked about some discussions of a budget freeze last meeting and we're looking to discuss whether we're going to need a budget freeze, but I thought it'd be best to wait till the budget workshop before our next meeting. We'll have a budget workshop whether the referendum passes or not. We'll have that meeting just so everyone is, you know, knows exactly what we're doing for the budget and we'll also talk about if the budget doesn't pass, a consideration of a freeze at that time. Okay? And that's the end of my report. Item three, superintendent's report, Missy.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, guests. We are continuing with our school spotlights. We are doubling up tonight because we had to shift one of our meetings back in March. So we are, I'm very pleased, I know we are very pleased to have East Granby Middle School as well as All Grove School for this evening. And even though All Grove is here first, Bob, are you okay to have our guests that are in person?
Yeah.
Okay. So at this time, Mr. Tim Phelan, principal of East Granby Middle School, will give us a little bit of an introduction to our guests who I think are pretty excited to be here tonight.
Tim Phelan, principal of the middle school, proud resident and taxpayer as well, and very excited to present to you a microcosm of some of the work that we do at East Granby Middle School. We pride ourselves in our mastery-based instructional model, which sounds like thick edge you speak, but really what it means to the core is that our students are in design of their own work. So we often give project-based learning as an example, give students the choice to do what they like to do and play to their strengths. It builds fun, it builds authenticity, it builds memories, it builds camaraderie, and all of that also fits within our district initiative, the Port Shule graduate. All five pillars are going to be demonstrated what you're about to see these two students, these awesome students do tonight with critical thinking, creative thinking, collaboration, communication, and last but not least, super citizenship, our five Cs. So I also know what the board of ed likes to hear the students do, the talking more so than me, so I think I'm just going to pass it over to Quinn Thompson and Lily Thompson, who I wanted to call Thompson Twins, but my teen eighties already had a band that had a copyright on that, so we're just going to go Thompson and Thompson for the evening. Thank you.
Where should we put our music? Because we have like the Linux. Is there a place you can put it?
We are going to be able to see the podium here soon.
I can move the podium out. Do you want the podium moved out?
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
All right. Can I put the computer down, Mr. Kirchner? Yeah. All right. So you can put it right on top of the computer. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Perfect. All right. Should we sit down?
Can I help?
Um, I guess we can start sitting because I need to sit down. Yeah, wait, okay. Okay, just grab your stuff. It's good. Sorry. Sorry. Wait, here. There we go. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Hello, my name is Quinn.
And I'm Lily. Um, and we made this project for our social studies class during our Africa unit. Uh, our teacher, Ms. Peterson, gave us an assignment to do a project on people in Africa living in villages who have to walk for water for long periods of time every day. We wrote this song to show awareness for those people, their challenges, and how we can help solve them. The song talks about how people in Africa walk for water just for it to be dirty, contaminated, and disease-causing, and they don't have proper filtration systems.
Um, it also talks about how charities are donating pipes to help install clean water in the villages and how this, it's very important that we help them.
So this is our song and we hope you like it.
Okay. I got it. Does that work?
Do they want to sit over here too?
Yeah.
It's a little.
Maybe I can pull the music. Can we pull the music? Would that help?
Well, actually, yeah.
How about we do that? History and history and see, Lisa.
I can see one right arm and one left arm, so I think we're good.
I'm just not here and I can pull this thing. Would that be easier? All right.
See you. Yeah, more problem solving.
Okay. Creative thinking, communication. Okay.
I agree. Nope. Yeah. One, two. There's a problem that we hate to bother, but kids in Africa really need fresh water. Fresh water shouldn't be exclusive. These four kids and water is polluted and some have to water thirty minutes every day. There's gonna be a solution, let's find a way. These people need water for their sons and daughters, eleven-two dollars a day will keep the sickness away. These people need water so they can grow stronger, global warming threats. Let's take a stand. What's next? So there's a couple things that we need to share. First of all, most people don't even have healthcare. The average wage per day is a hundred and a half to people in Africa, it's five there a challenge. Contaminated water is making people diseases and every single day that number increases when they kick them in that long trench for his journey. They walk out there waiting for some water that's dirty. Oh! These people need water for their sons and daughters, eleven-two dollars a day will keep the sickness away. These people need water so they can grow stronger, global warming threats. Let's take a stand. What's next? So how can you help? Well, here's what to do. Do this as charities and advocate to pipes to install clean water in villages so people can have the same kinds of privilege, access to water and keep the right, and it's why it's out that we have to fight despite the harsh waters they're living in. So come on and help. We need you joining in. These people need water for their sons and daughters, eleven-two dollars a day will keep the sickness away. These people need water so they can grow stronger, global warming threats. Let's take a stand. What's next? So how can you help? Well, here's what to do. Do this as charities and advocate to pipes to install clean water in villages so people can have the same kinds of privilege, access to water and keep the right, and it's why it's out that we have to fight despite the harsh waters they're living in. So come on and help. We need you joining in. These people need water for their sons and daughters, eleven-two dollars a day will keep the sickness away. These people need water so they can grow stronger, global warming threats. Let's take a stand. What's next? These people need water for their sons and daughters, eleven-two dollars a day will keep the sickness away. These people need water so they can grow stronger, global warming threats. Let's take a stand and reflect.
Well done.
Great job.
That was great.
That was awesome.
That was absolutely great.
I could listen to that over again.
I've heard they made a video for, for Mrs. Peterson's class.
Oh, piano version. I want to give a shout out to ELA as well, though. They did read a novel called The Long Walk to Water. That was like cross-curricular with Mr. Fusco and ELA as well. So it was a neat combination.
Ms. Peterson is our seventh grade social studies teacher.
Hi.
And Connecticut State finalist in two thousand twenty-four teacher of the year.
Congratulations.
And another project they're working on in this last week of school with Mr. Fusco and Mr. Crowe. Do you want to tell them about that one as well? That's a fun one that they're working on.
So like, we're designing these battle bots in science. So we're using these motors and we're attaching different things to have to make them move. And at the end, we're going to have like a battle between the classes and we're going to try to knock them over. And it's like whichever one, like you win. And then in ELA, we're doing a essay on why we think it's going to win. And we're doing like tragic backstories to our bots and stuff like that. So it's like other kind of.
Isn't there like a hype story element going to go with it too?
We wrote a tragic backstory for.
They have to make advertisements, right? Like, I heard some like propaganda for you about that. I want everyone to know while this is happening in science, we're writing our time capsule letters that we give to the seniors every year. It'll be like Zen vibes and chaos.
So anyway, we hope you enjoy it. Any questions for the students here?
Wonderful. Yeah. Great job. Thank you so much.
Will we hear you at the farmer's market this summer?
Oh, yeah.
Will I get you for it? There you go.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you so much.
Guys.
Are they?
It's free to go.
Yeah, it's early excuse.
Both of us stay.
But we do the whole meeting. Oh, we have to go home.
Tim, you could be free to go too if you wish.
I'm not going to.
I know misery loves company, but we're not going to make you stay.
Bob's now, which one do you want? First of all.
I've got a graduate coming up. They've got to get ready for it.
Everybody.
Bye-bye. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
See you.
Did I just open this?
Kenzie told me they were coming.
Well, good evening, everyone. I just introduced myself on bottom graph and the principal of All Grove Elementary School. And I'm here to share with you in our series on highlighting our schools, I guess on the final act.
You are?
Yeah. And it's the All Grove School. It's just, we're, I'm going to, we're going to highlight tonight some of the programs we've been, the academic programs we've been working on in K one and two. The focus tonight will be on a new initiative coming from the state of Connecticut for kindergarten, and it is for what is called intentional play. Play is actually part of the kindergarten curriculum. It's where they learn to share, where they learn to do their first critical thinking, to be citizens, and a lot of other good skills that come out of that that they don't think they're learning. They think they're just playing. So it is actually, the state is mandating this at kindergarten to have some portion of the day where there is intentional play and to recommend that it be carried on other grades. So this winter, two of our teachers, you don't have to read this, I'll summarize it for you, but the two of our teachers, Mrs. Zentec and Mrs. Rosenzweig in kindergarten, went to Cass Connecticut Associate of Schools in Cheshire for a workshop to sort of get ahead of this, where they learned some strategies. And one, one of those strategies was the, oh my gosh, is what it's to pick and play. So what you want children, what children do is they have to decide what they're going to do, and then they have to write about it. They have to do a couple of sentences. Again, these are kindergartners, they're learning the alphabet, so it's a way to get them to apply that alphabet. They're at the very beginnings of learning how to, how to communicate using writing. And centering this activity on play is very, obviously of high interest. It will get them to elaborate, so they start out writing very basic sentences like, today I will play with. As the year goes on, they'll add, I will play with this and I will make this. I will play with this and I will make this and I will, I will work with Timmy and I will share. So the idea is to get them to continue writing. And we're seeing that the kids really love it because it's how, you know, they're motivated to do it. So rather than me tell you, I'm going to show you one of our students who plays it is going to.
Pleasure. Can you read me a play plan? I didn't really play. What are you going to play with today?
Play with.
Let's try play dough. So far, I am going to play with. How can we spell dough?
Do you do?
Right? What do you care if you add?
Like dough.
What's your punctuation going to be?
Three.
What will you do with the play dough?
I'm going to take four cents.
That's right.
I'm going to.
Now, you'll notice in the background, there's sixteen other children doing the same thing without the teacher. And you can hear this child and you can hear them working, but not interrupt. It's, one of the things teachers notice, it's, it's created a sort of calmness before playtime. Kids are not fighting over things because they planned it out. And as you can see, we're, this is, this is later in the year where she's adding those subsequent sentences. So they're finding it really, that the children really love it. It works very well with our, our reading program, our new Sabbath reading program, which is really pushes writing even as early as kindergarten. We're telling you some great stories. If you've got children at All Grove, we're doing interviews with grandparents, which are going K one and two, so they're expanding on those. So we're, we're very happy with, with the new ELA program that we've instituted this year. Okay, so next in, where am I going? Hold on. In, we're going to.
Play.
Oh, wait, that's, all right. So in, in math, we, after, during COVID, we purchased a math program called Big Ideas Math. The reason we purchased it was because, if you recall, we were homebound in the spring and our platform, there was no way to, to do at-home learning. And we purchased a program called Big Ideas, which was very good on a video sort of computer platform. And then East Granby solved the problem and everybody came back within a month. So it was a good program, but we wanted it, we, we used it, but by the second year, our teacher said it's not really, it would have done well if we were, if we were all homebound because it had a very good interface and was very user-friendly for parents. And we found that when we first went out, it was the struggle to, you know, to try and teach very young children math, you know, online, it was very difficult. So we used it, but we really, we, in that time, we had a two-year contract, it was a special deal, it was wonderful. But in that time, we looked for a new program that really, and the nice thing was, we did it K five with all the teachers, and in fact, we included sixth grade. So it's going to, to move with students in a consistent way, this consistent program. It's called the iReady Math Program, and we're going to see some of the features of it now, why we like it so much. So each lesson has these components, you know, the start, the connect to prior knowledge, the triot, discuss it. These are kind of just terms that you can imagine, you know. Basically, the, the concept is to get kids thinking about math in different ways. You're going to see a lot of different strategies. People often ask, well, when you see these different strategies at these lower levels, what happens when they get older? Well, then they're going to identify, this is really getting them thinking about numbers in math in a different way, but once they get to fifth and sixth grade, they're going to use those, those computing strategies that we know, you know, that, that, but it's just, we want all children to think they can do math and, you know, that they can do it with a manipulative, they can do it with breaking numbers apart. It gets them thinking about math, not just how do I, how do I solve this equation? What's this equation really meaning? Are the numbers getting larger or are they getting smaller and why? So it's to let them sort of, you know, just sort of immerse themselves in the numbers before they have to commit to an answer. So, so this is a case of showing you.
What are you sharing about your partner right now?
Um, I was.
Okay, so we have two, or one inch and two centimeters. So Sienna, you said which one doesn't belong?
Um, I, I use my yard. Because the sandwiches are on a whole. Would I, would you say two yards on one yardstick?
What about a meter stick?
Is that one of your options? So is Sienna right? Does that one not belong on there?
Yes.
Okay.
So you can see that it was just, they were looking, doing measurement and it was, there was units up there and one of them didn't fit. They had, there's no, you know, the boy's not wrong for, for throwing out a meter stick. He's trying, he's thinking, and, but then they can decide, but one of these answers is, is the right one. So it's, it's really to stimulate what the, the upcoming lesson is going to be.
What are you sharing about your partner right now? What are you sharing about your partner right now? What are you sharing?
Okay. And this is the, they're, they're try it, they're, they're going back to their workbooks and trying to solve the problem. I'm pressing.
I don't think there's a video on there, Bob.
No, I'm trying to move the, the slide. Is it breaking all right? All right, so then this is, after they've done the independent practice, like their guests, they've done, they've done the meeting first, the whole class, where they kind of work in little teams, then they go back independently, and then after they've done their computation, they come back up to the board. And this is, you're going to see students using three different strategies to solve this similar equation. The first one is going to be a little bit difficult to hear, I apologize, but, but the boy's using a number line to show.
This is second grade?
This is second grade, number line to show subtraction.
All right. Tash, can you show us how you solve the problem?
I'm, 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 I'm,[1279.82]
So Tash came up with the same answer that Connor had. Connor used an open number line. Tash used the place value box. Cameron, can you show us how you solved the?
Just want to say if this is looking to you like, I don't know what, it's okay.
Glad to see the third one.
Yeah, but this is the idea that you're breaking numbers apart, you know, moving backwards on them, you first, you know, three hundred and something minus two hundred, you go back to one hundreds, that's easy. Then you're left with a twenty and a nine. So you move, get them thinking, that's how conceptual about the number. But they still obviously are going to do this, the traditional method.
Problem. So I keep it traditional way. When I went to look through to learn from three, I noticed that two is less than three, so I took a ten away from seven.
Took it away?
So I took a ten away from the seventh, so then I left it at six. Then three became twelve, twelve minus three equals nine. Six minus four equals two. Three minus two equals one, and then I got one more, so I got one.
So yeah, so the idea is we do get that, we do that traditional method, but just to get kids thinking about numbers more in a more conceptual way.
So Bob, just a question, does this, does this cause confusion, like doing it many different ways?
No, no, we don't see that. And our, this is our second year with iReady and the nice thing is now we're getting apples to apples, which we didn't always have it at the All Grove level, because we didn't get real testing until third grade. But this is, these are standardized based on their program and we're seeing really strong results. I'll show you, the preliminary numbers are in, but you'll see in the fall. They're able to be comfortable, because they're being guided and they're working with teams, but they're always coming back with this group method. And we do have, and the program is wonderful, and I'll show you in a minute, how it also supports students that might be struggling.
Okay.
I think it's the adults who are more confused.
It's there, no, it took me a long time to first even ask what was going on.
No, I actually think, but like people learn different ways, so it might be better to present different things, but I agree with you.
You wouldn't introduce this in middle school. You're doing this at a younger level, kids are still, it's very plastic in their mind of how to approach numbers, to get them thinking about, what is three hundred and twenty-nine? Well, it's three one hundreds, it's a twenty and a nine, and how can you make it different ways? So they, when they start seeing those larger and larger numbers, they're not intimidated. They know they can handle them. So it's, it does take some patience and work, but the kids, the kids are, you know, they're very, there's a big hands-on component to it, you're going to see in a second too, I think that's very helpful for kids this age. Alright David, what happened here? Why would it? Okay, there we go. So this is just, you can see, the, on the board on the right, this is more examples how people, I know you can't really see it too well, if you're sitting this far away as I am, but it's the one with the three blocks on the left in red, it's called expanded notation, where you break, you know, three one hundreds, two tens, and all of that, again, to break up numbers to understand what they mean and how the children are getting different answers. And it allows them to sort of, and it's the explaining part that's the biggest, one of the most important parts, that the child can go up and then, when they can articulate what they just did to their classmates, they're understanding it at a high level and their classmates are seeing, okay, that this is something that may work for them.
Yeah, shows they understand place value by doing it.
Right.
Or to get into the abstract.
Exactly, they need that concrete, how these numbers work. And. Alright, um. I'll look at this one, I guess. Alright, so now connect, apply, and independent practice. This is now, they go off and they do with the manipulatives. And the manipulatives is a fancy name for a thingy. There are number lines, as you can see on the desks, there are those wonderful little, those little green things that you can draw, use the geometry, you can make circles and hexagons and things like that. It's got a measuring edge, it's got a straight edge, they can draw. Over, you know, right here, these are base ten blocks and they're, they're single, little single blocks, like a tiny Lego, and then there's a ten, a strip of ten, and then there's a block of a hundred. So they can use them for the tens, hundreds, and it gets them, again, building numbers, seeing that this is not out of their, you know, out of their reach. They can do it, if they can see three of these big one hundred blocks and three ten blocks, I got three thirty already, I can work with that. So, and they are working together and discussing is a key part of it. And then this, this is doing, they're using, I think it's dominos for odd and even numbers to learn, they do skip counting, they do rounding, all of those things. And this is, now this is what I was saying, one of the features of this is on iReady, something called MyPath. So every child spends a portion of the ten minutes or fifteen minutes. MyPath is, when they take a baseline test, a benchmark test in the fall, they take unit tests, the, MyPath takes those test results and builds an individual program for a child. So this is primarily at this age is for what's called fact fluency, that, you know, doing that addition faster and faster, being able to do, because the idea that, it's like writing, the quicker you can make your letters, the quicker you can decode words, the faster you can read, the more fluent, the more and more it sounds like actual reading and language. It's the same thing with math, if you're not spending time thinking about how to add two numbers, you can do it quickly. And it tracks them and then it, it's computer adaptive in that if they're getting better, it challenges them at a higher level. If they're struggling, it will move it more to where their level is, and it builds in rewards that the kids like to get them, it's just bells and things like that, they might be able to get an avatar, put a hat on it, but it's something that they enjoy doing. So it's, it's a way that, you know, it supplements what the teacher's doing, it gives them this, not just an independent, but it gives a feedback to the teacher and the student about how they're progressing. So we, and we've seen very strong progress, and I'll, again, I'll be sharing that with you in the fall. And now in the first grade classroom, I just wanted to add this, because Mrs. Smith did her class, but Mrs. McDonald's, I have something I want to show you. So one of the things was, they finished the, all the units for the year about a week or so ago, and now they said, well, the Connecticut State Standards no longer includes coins. You don't have to do them, we do them. So we have a unit on coins, and that's what, this one is going, I said, well, I have to share this, because we, you know, it's hard to think about, there's no coins. You know, I had a paper, I had coins, I was, they really helped in math, and it is, it is sad, you're missing that, those multiples, because it's not just, you know, skip counting, you got pennies, and you got dimes, and nickels, and quarters. So this is an activity, we had to have them go home and find coins and bring them in, down the couch, I guess, I don't know. So this is the, basically it's a, they have to reach in a bag, pull out a random amount, and figure out what they have.
So let's put them on the table so we can see what they are. Alright, Landon, tell me what you chose. You have four coins, what coins are they? Are those nickels or are those dimes?
Dimes.
So do we want to start by adding the penny or the dime first?
Dime.
The dime. Why do we want to add the dime first, everyone?
Because.
Good, we want to start with the most valuable. So if we line them up, we would start with the dimes, and what would we have to skip count by?
Tens.
How come we would skip count by tens?
Because it's one ten.
Excellent. So as a group of three, Landon, you be the pointer, let's skip count by tens. I want to hear all your voices.
Five, four, nine, one.
How do we know Avery to add one instead of another ten?
Because they're not silver and they don't, and they're not one.
What coin is that?
It's a penny.
It's a penny. Landon, put it down there, we'll zoom right in. Okay. Excellent. So I need you all to write the total value on your paper. Okay, Paulina is reaching, grabbing her coins.
I need some help here.
What did you get?
I think I got two videos going at once. It's just two other children doing another activity the same way.
Okay, Paulina is reaching, grabbing her coins. And how much is a dime worth? Good bless you. How much is a dime worth?
Ten cents.
So would we want to start by adding the dimes or the pennies first?
The dimes.
The dimes, how come? It's the bigger number, you got it. So Jake and Paulina, put your fingers on the dimes, and I want to hear you guys skip counting together.
Ten.
And now what do we do with the other coins?
Count.
Oh Jake, how do you know to count by one?
Because it's a penny.
And how much is a penny? Okay, one cent. So what is the total value of the coins that we take out of the bag?
Thirty-two.
Excellent. So you can draw and record that, good work.
Okay, and that was a little walk through what we're doing at All Grove School in the math program, the new math iReady program, but more importantly, just the idea that our kids are doing wonderful things, they're working together, and we are, you know, we may be way up here in the corner in Connecticut, but we're on top of everything the state has brought forth and what is really what we, the data shows is going to help our children learn, you know, for the 21st century. So I'm proud of what they're doing and I thank you guys, all that stuff you're looking at, and all the stuff you've supplied to us, smart boards, the, everything that we see here, so, thank you for what, giving us what we need. We really do appreciate it, All Grove.
Thank you Bob for presenting.
Thank you very much, that was great.
Did you say that the math program though was purchased with COVID money?
Yes.
That's great. And it still has use today, right?
And we have, we have a few years left on it too.
And the reading program we also, didn't we purchase that?
Yes, we did, yeah. A little bit left there. We'll, we'll, we'll get every ounce out of it.
Thank you, and you're welcome if you want to turn that over, whatever you'd like to do, thank you so much, and thank the teachers. Actually, I just want to clarify, the intentional play does not take the place of recess, is that correct?
No, it does not.
Right, it's an additional.
These are assignments that a teacher will collect and review and do feedback with children. It's, it's not sneaking a writing assignment in on kids without them knowing, it's like, you know, putting the medicine in the sugar.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Take care.
You too.
Have a good summer.
Okay, 3B, we have one resignation, Ms. Sarah Park is a mathematics teacher at East Grammy High School. She's been with us, finishing her second year. She has really made some really nice bonds with our high schoolers in the very short period of time. You see her at activities and events, she's actually pursuing a different pathway outside of public education, so we are very sorry to see her go, but certainly wish her well. I have a few quick updates I wanted to share. As you know, we've been doing quite a bit with construction closeout projects. Our roof project, the middle school, high school roof project is deemed complete, the town did receive the final payment, including any holdback of $331,996, so that project is done. We also have the Seymour All Grove and Board of Education closeouts that began with an application in 2009. Today we had the, we received the final audit report for both the All Grove and the Board of Education projects. We are expected to receive just over $53,000 back from All Grove and $383 from the Board of Ed project, that was a very small tube space project. The Department of Administrative Services is still in the process of completing the Seymour renovation project, which was the largest of all three. They were on site a couple weeks ago, and I do thank the town, Rosalie and Kelly and Jim Hayden and Eden for, you know, and Roger LaFleur for gathering all these documents from so long ago. Interestingly enough, the way they needed them submitted now was very different than would have been required back in 2009, so it did take some work to get the required documents to them. My understanding is, in my communication with Mr. Bruce, is that they are finalizing the draft report, and we should have that by the end of this week.
And that goes back to what year?
2009.
Now, was that because the paperwork wasn't done from the board at that time? I mean, I appreciate what you've done, that's a long time ago.
The paperwork, I know Ms. Dr. Charles submitted the paperwork, so back in 2017, 18, but it's now taken even this much longer to kind of remind them that they have some paperwork and we needed to finalize these closeouts. Chairperson, prior to that, I'm not sure what happened to be 2009 and 2018, you know, in terms of the process, but the good news is, we will be complete with all three of those building projects.
We probably could use the money now, certainly. It's happy to get it back now?
I guess it goes back to the school building committee for specific use, I'm not really sure, but it's back to them and, you know, we should have the amount, which will be a much greater amount from Seymour School, probably by the end of the week.
Receive the amount or have the number given, like told to us? You just need to give us the number?
I'm sorry Lisa.
You said we should receive it by the end of the week, you mean that we're going to receive the statement that tells us how much we're getting, not the actual fund?
Yeah, so what happens is, there's a draft report, so I receive the draft report, I'll send it over to the school town building committee, then they will decide whether they're going to kind of, kind of do a full audit, like the roof project was much larger, so there was a meeting, or we'll review it for what their findings are to see if there's any disagreement. The draft audit then gets signed over, and then we get issued the final audit with the funds to be received at some point after.
Thank you.
So our Board of Ed in All Grove, we are going to receive the final audit, we have not yet received the draft audit for Seymour, that's what we should receive this week. Building developments, I try and keep on top of the building developments in town. We do know that there has been some foundations poured, Bramble Bush Circle, my understanding is there's 116 units, 38 have building permits and have begun active construction. So that's our, kind of the first phase of the building that's to be.
I'm sorry, how many units did you say?
There's 116 units and 38 have building permits. And I believe these are the three and four bedroom homes across, off of East Street, I believe it is, down after the gym and the craft.
Expect kids with three and four bedrooms, okay.
And actually, I think there's a meeting tomorrow of planning and zoning, which I will be attending as well. I attended the Economic Development Council meeting back a couple weeks ago. PTO lunch option. As we know, we are a brown bag district, we have, we are still a brown bag district. In the past, we've done fundraising for lunch options for students sponsored by, whether it's the PTO, certain classes have done it in the past, student council at the middle high school. The PTO has provided a service recently and it's extended their option for five days a week with a particular vendor. So the vendor comes in, I met with a number of the women who are kind of working and doing some organizing, and they're looking at doing a different vendor. So I just wanted to share that the PTO, the hot lunch group is looking to bring in a different vendor that'll provide some options for the kids on a daily basis. There's a range, the costs are more expensive than what we're, than what is currently being charged, but it's been very challenging finding a vendor that is under a five or six dollar price that families are, and children are enjoying the food, and I believe, you know, they did receive some feedback from parents. I know, I appreciate the fact that they're willing to provide this service, I think our families, you know, do appreciate that option. So we will see that, I think the company's called Ordo, there's a, kind of a tasting, either later this week or next week, I forget that, we'll kind of be involved in. So that's just a little bit of an announcement. Capital, last board meeting, we talked about capital. We have our Board of Finance meeting on the 18th, in which the capital will need to be presented, and at the end of last meeting, I gotta figure out a better way to organize this, I feel like I'm trying to look over everyone's heads. At the end of last meeting, I'll just refresh your memory a tad bit, we talked about the fencing in addition to the irrigation. So the items that are up for request, that was approved at our last board meeting, is the irrigation, our technology capital to complete our view boards, indoor air quality I've tried to contact a few fencing companies, I think I shared it the last time, some of our irrigation companies are not bidding, some have bid in the past. We had a couple fencing companies come out, I've requested as directed to delineate the sideline fencing from the home run, you know, back fencing, so we've had a couple out, I don't have the quotes with me yet, hopefully I will have them by the end of this week because I need to get this over to our Board of Finance with all of our quotes before the end of the week, they do like the information a week ahead of time. So essentially, we are looking to request the 25, 250 for projectors, the 40,000 for air quality updates, which is actually from the next capital or next fiscal year, beginning in July 1, and then the 75 plus the 25 for the field maintenance. So I guess I just wanted to, we did this a bit ago, so I just wanted to kind of bring it back up again that we're...
I just want to throw a thought out to the board for consideration. I mean, this is a project we want to have done, we have it in our five-year plan, it's been our five-year plan since 2006. If we don't pass a referendum vote next week, it's kind of difficult to go to the town and ask for irrigation the last week of the month, even though we know the money's there. I just find it difficult. I also know that the Board of Finance is always asking us about how much money we have in our non-lapsing account, because they don't want that to be, get too large. Like Missy said, we're having trouble getting quotes. I had a guy who was going to give me a quote on irrigation, so of course he said he'd done one five years ago, he gave me a partial quote again, but never a complete quote, they want three quotes. My thought to the board is, just for what you think, is it worth us just taking it out of our non-lapsing account and doing it? We don't need any approval, we don't have to come up with three different quotes, we could take the quote we like best, and we could get the job done without going in front of the town and asking for town money. We have those dollars there, the Board of Finance, for their budget, has gone into their account to take out some money to help with taxes, and I'm just wondering, you know, if that would just be easier for us. And then this year, and I don't mean to put Mary on the spot, if we have any money left over at the end of the year, I believe it would be easier to get the Board of Finance to let us put that in our non-lapsing, if they know we used it for the irrigation system. That's just my only thought to the board, whether something like that's worth, still we're going to talk about our facilities, but, you know, with the referendums failing and... I want you to non-lapse again. Well, Mary, do you have that? It's more than that.
Yeah.
A lot more, and I know they just don't like us holding, we've always been very good, we've been fixing the tennis courts, because no one else in town is, and these facilities are being used by the community, and I don't think any of us want to lock them up when we're done. But we have those dollars, it's something that we've been looking at for almost 20 years now, and to go and ask the town to give it to us, especially the Board of Finance is looking to see what they could kick down the road. We just invested $75,000 in those fields last year, and we were lucky, I was wrong, I thought they'd dry out, but we had the wettest season ever, and they look good. I don't know how long that's going to continue having our rainy systems. So that was my only thought, what the board thinks of that idea.
Credit balance, $168,000?
$168,000. I know they don't like us getting too much in there, so I thought if we used it, that we could hopefully, hopefully have something left over, and that they may be more likely to let us add to it. And then it benefits them, because we're not asking for that money, because I know they're looking to see what they could kick down the road. Any thoughts?
I wasn't, I wasn't at the last Board of Finance meeting, but we all know that they have proposed a pretty serious cut to capital, and I don't know, since I wasn't at the meeting, whether or not they had specified, you know, whether it was Board of Ed, whether it was town, specific projects, does anyone know?
It was open ended.
So, I mean, I think the number's like a buck and a half, isn't it? That they are looking to cut from capital, and you're like, okay, so, but they weren't specific, so it's like, you know, where's that coming from? And I guess... And I guess, Bob, it's a good strategy to sit there if, if in fact, we could use.
Yeah, we don't have any restrictions with that.
If we could use those funds, I think it would be a good faith on our part to say, you know, you want to, you know, they've committed to that. It's going to appear.
And I believe the community wants it too.
On referendum. And, you know, it certainly would make the Board of Finance's job easier if in fact the referendum passes and if in fact that becomes a reality, that the, that the capital would be reduced by that amount. That's it. That's all I got to say.
I guess I would add that, what did we put in, 75,000 last year towards this project?
We put half of it. The town put the other half.
Oh, 50. But to your point, if we don't irrigate it, it will be gone and wasted.
And we're not going to have three quotes by the time they meet. I mean, these people were upset. Guys said, you know, well, we've quoted this. I mean, he went all the way back and knew the athletic director before me that he did quotes for. Again, this is, this isn't new. That's embarrassing. And then they don't want to come out. You know, again, I met with the guy, he sent me, you know, I shared it with Ricky, just the numbers of approximately where it would be, and I never got the details back from him. We've contacted others. And so Missy's got quotes on it and we can do it. Or we, or we have to go the long route. And I do believe they would rather see us use the money, especially with the economy the way it is right now, than us just holding it. It would help them and maybe help us get it done. Just a thought.
We should, we'll have a, we'll typically have a facilities meeting at the end of the school year to look at some of our, I was with Ray Carlson not too long ago, some items at the end of the year that we need to look at for the summer, kind of for repair. Some are a little bit more expensive than we'd expected. So I think we just need to look at all that, you know, kind of together.
Makes sense.
Okay, anyone else? No?
The HVAC, I was just reading some the other night and I'm trying to find it again. Do we have to do all the schools at once? Or I thought that, I found some updated bills from March.
For the indoor air quality?
Yeah.
We have to.
They also authorized new grants too for inspection.
So the law did change and they, starting with next January, it's 20%.
20%.
Two of the district schools to be completed by, by next January.
I thought, I thought it was 20% every year and you have up until the.
30.
2030 to get your whole district done.
But you have to start with the 20%, I think, within the next year, yes.
Okay. So is the 40, are we just trying to get it all done and be on the same schedule? Or are we, is that 40K for? We don't even have five buildings, so obviously it would be a third each.
The. That is for all four buildings.
Okay.
Because when we started this.
We had to.
If they had a much tighter deadline. So that is for all four buildings.
Is there any benefit? I mean, do we keep with that or do we look at just meeting the minimum and doing one building? Because we have till 2030 to get all three done.
Right. The capital accounts stay open.
Okay.
So I think it might behoove us to request what we have the quote for, for all four buildings. And then what we do is we don't have to use it all in one year. We would just, it would remain open until we finish all four buildings.
Isn't there a cap on that?
On which one?
On the duration. You can't keep that thing open for 20 years.
I'm not aware of a cap. I'm not saying there isn't, but I'm not, I'm not aware of one. I think, to be honest with you, Mr. Andrews, I think that's what brought our open elementary school buildings a couple of years ago was when a Board of Finance member said, hey, you have this open capital, you know, which actually kind of prompted the, the initial conversations. Because remember, there's two components with interior quality. You have the, the annual testing, but then you have the balancing that needs to occur, which is a different piece to it.
There are some, when I was reading it, there's, it doesn't have to be a certified. So you could have a mechanical engineer as well, a PE, I think, could also do it. There are some other, it was actually interesting reading it because they also allow waivers if you can show, like you said, you were having a hard time finding people certified to do that. You can actually request a waiver if you can't find anybody certified to do it within a time limit or two.
Right. That's part of the reason why they extended the date was because they know.
There's not enough people.
Correct.
Yep. When they did that in March, they created new DAS grants for the inspection and certification. Is that, did that go out to, to be able to apply to yet or?
I haven't seen it.
Okay.
For the actual inspections themselves?
Yeah. They're part of that extension bill. They said they're creating grants through DAS for the inspection and certification as well. The rabbit holes you find yourself in Google.
Well, I guess I might just suggest the, because the motion that approved our last capital, if we're going to make a change, probably should have a different motion. Because the last motion includes everything, including the.
If it wasn't for the current budget situation, I would be very high proponent of doing it all at once because it's only going to get more expensive as you move down the line. So.
Or let me just throw another idea. Does it make sense to maybe split the difference and use a little bit from capital, you know, recognizing we still have some building maintenance to do out of our non-lapsing, perhaps, you know, depending on.
Well, I guess we're asking, is there any opposition? Because when we go to the Board of Finance, we may get a sense from them. If they don't want to give it to us, do we, do we have the option of considering the non-lapsing? Because then we'd have to come back to our next meeting and do non-lapsing. When I go to the Board of Finance, I'm only one voting member of the board, so I can't speak for anything that the board, I can't say what the board's going to do.
When's the planned, the overall HVAC, the big project, replacing the HVAC, when's that taking place?
We're in the middle of it.
We are. When's it supposed to be finished?
I had to, we need to file for an extension. It was originally going to be done by the end of December, but due to some kind of equipment delays, supply delays, we did file for an extension.
Okay.
I think it's a one-year extension. Not saying it's going to take another year, but.
I thought the majority of it was going to be, the large portion of it's going to be when we're out of session starting, right? Or?
Actually, they've done a good part of it. I know over the summer, they're going to be starting like the lower, the lower level and then.
The interior?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So if that gets pushed out, because we're not going to balance or certify anything until that's 100% done, right?
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. All right.
You know, I think, looking down the road, I think next year we have 100,000 in there, don't we, for air conditioning for Seymour? I think that's probably an item that they're going to want to kick down a bit.
Well, next year, I think we intentionally, we had, we had the roof and I believe we put the roof with the Seymour air conditioning to kind of put that together close to cost. Other than that, for next year. There really won't be anything else major that we'll be asking for, for capital.
Any other comments or directions from the board?
And I know they're reassessing our roof as well. So.
Right.
To determine if there's any more repairs that can be made to wait until another year. I believe something with a current bond project or something would be more beneficial. So I know that the town's looking at that.
Yeah, Eddie and Ray are looking up there to see the condition of it. So they're looking to bump that down, which if it works, that would be fine. Okay. Nothing else on capital? We'll go to item D.
Should I, so I guess what I'm just saying is the last motion includes irrigation.
I guess that's.
And.
We'll stick with that.
Fencing for capital.
What's that?
For this, at this point.
My question is if they balk it at the meeting, do I have any leverage to say we might look elsewhere?
I would support that.
So we'll keep it in there.
Yeah.
That's, what's that?
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Very good. They're going to balk at it now.
Well, they don't watch our meetings.
Now they're definitely going to.
Well, maybe they should. That's okay.
I think we're all comfortable with.
They're going to find something, well, they're going to find something.
Yep.
And just a reminder, June 24th is the Board Budget Workshop prior to the board meeting. I just can't remember if we said 5:00 or 5:30.
5:30 is what the notes said.
On the 18th.
It's the 18th.
Yep.
Most minutes.
Okay, and that's my report, Mr. Prescotts.
Okay, thank you. Item four, committee reports. Anything new on policy?
I am trying to schedule a meeting and we've actually been back and forth about it a couple of times today. I think I'm going to start looking for a date after this week's goings on with the graduation and everything. So maybe starting next week, I'll throw some dates out. So we can put that on the calendar.
Okay. And budget, we're on a wait and see with that. Do you have a budget coming up? Do you have a curriculum?
We had a meeting on the 22nd. I'm, it was a virtual meeting and we talked about the schedule for the summer. And at this point, we seem to have a consensus that we were going to meet as needed and then resume regular scheduled meetings in September. There was information about the new teacher evaluation guidelines for the coming school year. Mrs. Light asked me to share the information that they have been working with principals, curriculum leaders, participating in workshops with representatives across the four buildings. PDEC Committee, which is made of the administrators, faculty and staff across the district, is charged by the Department of Education with preparing the document. The document itself will be voted on by the PDEC within the week and then presented at the New Future to the Board. Aspects of the plan that will remain similar to previous evaluation system include that untenured educators will still have multiple formal, full class and informal, shorter evaluations. New educators to the district who achieve tenure elsewhere will also have a combination of formal and informal observations. Tenured educators who are placed on an improvement plan will have a combination of formal and informal evaluations. All parties listed above will also have multiple in-person meetings with an administrator. Aspects of the plan that will differ from the previous evaluation system, that tenured educators in good standing will have fewer, if any, formal evaluations, but will have multiple informal evaluations. These evaluations are followed by a timely conversation with the administrator. Frequent contact centered around discussing goals should make evaluations more useful and pertinent to pedagogical growth and classroom instruction. Along with student learning goals, educators will also have their personal education goals, which will help focus discussions with administrators towards teacher growth as an educator. As I said, that was what was submitted by Mrs. Light and conversations as of today is that she will look to the summer sometime, once that's agreed upon by the PDEC, to make a presentation to us here on the board to explain and/or allow us to ask more questions about things in general. New business we talked about in curriculum is the collaborative work on the K through five reading program. There's three other towns that have sought information on the new reading program that we're using that Mr. McGrath mentioned before, the SAVS MIU, K through five, with the hopes of implementing it in their own districts. Our teachers have worked with them with virtual Q and A sessions, as well as having our teachers generously volunteer to host other educators so they could see the program in action. Not only is this creating goodwill between districts, we are hopeful we can share professional development and collaborative opportunities in the future. So that's our curriculum subcommittee.
Thank you for the report. Item D, negotiations. Mark, anything new?
Nothing new.
Okay, Ricky, anything new from facilities that we haven't talked about?
Since last meeting.
And communications?
I think no update.
Okay. Recommended actions, can I get a motion to approve the 2024 financials?
I move to approve the May 2024 financials.
Okay. Motion by Lynn with a second.
No second motion.
Okay, John with a second. Okay. Mary?
There isn't too much new in May compared to other months. Few items to note is object 121, our certified substitutes continue to be hired due to the certified personnel being on family medical leave. Object 210, which is the healthcare is no longer negative as our employee contributions have been applied. And object 330, it's unanticipated special education and related services. We will offset some of this increase from billing from Hartford for our special ed choices.
I looked at, we actually looked at some of our numbers like this May compared to last May years ago and we trend very similarly across that 330 line.
I guess the only question I'll ask is any thoughts yet about the end of the year?
Not yet.
No range. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Can we vote on approving the May 2024 financials? All those in favor, signify saying aye. opposed, abstentions, motion carried, your name, please. Thank you. Agenda items for future meetings, we have the superintendent's evaluation. I know someone, let's see, so we got there. Anything else from anyone?
I have a question.
Mark?
And I think it maybe falls here. The Student Activity Fund. I think we all received an email on that. And it wasn't until I actually got in here and saw it after we had started, there was a couple of additions, or another email asking about it being on this agenda. So I want to put it on, at least at a minimum, to ensure that it's on for next agenda. Maybe we could talk about that.
I think it's going through policy first, right? And that's.
Yeah, they're, they're working on it and it is a policy issue. Our policy doesn't address it. They've looked at other districts and seems to be the same type of situation. I mean, yeah, this is something that needs to be taken care of that goes back to 2008, but it's, it's a, so they found it's not easy. To get it done right.
So if, with that being said, if that's where it's at and it's being worked through right now, that's fine. I think it would be prudent to at least provide an update at some point, even if it's just policy, hey, one of the things we're working on is this.
Well, is this on the policy agenda?
Yeah, there's two items we're going to focus on as well as all of our updates. One is student activities, the other is facilities use.
And we plan on meeting, Lynn, we're going to meet before the next Board of Ed meeting, right?
Yeah, I hope to, I'll throw out some days next week. Does anybody want to let me know when they're available next week?
I'm away.
Okay.
Only Thursday next week for me.
Only Thursday next week, so that narrows it down. Missy? How about you? Is Thursday good for you? Next Thursday, the day after graduation?
Next.
Oh, that's this week, sorry. That's, that's this week.
Next Thursday is the 20th?
It is.
I am not available that evening. I could, I could be available before 6:00 or after 8:30. I have another meeting.
So can I, so in policy, what, what is our goal to say? Because there's a few goals. There's current, we have this current situation and we have how we're moving forward. So this current situation has been.
Past and future.
Right. Has been going on for a year. So what do, so I just need clarification. So in policy, we're determining what we're going to do? Like they're requesting something specific. So is, we can't vote in a policy meeting, so are we determining what we think they should do and then bring it to board? should do, and then bring it to the Board? I'm just confused.
For a policy change, yes, the committee would talk about it and come to the board.
What policy change are we making?
Policy change would be whatever needs to be done from this point forward. We still have to address the past, but the policy is what is going to drive moving forward, so it doesn't happen anymore.
Right, they're asking about the past, so they're asking about that. So what does that have to do with policy, I guess is my question?
Our current policy for student activities funds, it was, it was actually updated in 2017. 2017 prior stated, I'm gonna just paraphrase, I don't have it in front of me, that funds after a certain point of time would be returned to the general funds from student class accounts. 2017, there was a policy change, which says would be returned to the class, but it doesn't say anything more than that. So in the absence of not having anything as specific to return to the class, I think I shared, I've spoken to our auditors, our attorney, CASBO, and explored other districts, how they do that. And we were advised to not return money to an individual. It needs to be kind of the trustee or an account. So our policy can reflect that, but right now it says just to return to the class at a certain time.
So what did we do the year before?
The year before?
2022. I'm just, it's just, I guess, it's one of those things, I feel like I'm out in the public, I'm getting asked about this, I know people this involves, they're asking something specific, so I'm just trying to figure out what are we gonna talk about in policy that's different than what we're talking about?
Well, policy's gonna go from now forward.
Right. So what are we doing about this, I guess is my.
What is this? There's two emails that we received.
I just got one.
No, we got a second one that came in probably late this afternoon.
I didn't get it.
Asking.
Public member?
Asking what's gonna be done. We thought it was gonna be on the agenda tonight, I don't see it on the agenda.
I didn't get that one. Well, I guess that's my question, is this has been a year, they're stating that in the email, it's been a year. So what, so what are we discussing in policy?
We're discussing in policy how to return end-of-year class funds.
From this point forward.
Correct.
So there was no, there's policy, and they're trying to figure out how to fix the past.
This year, now we, now we have kind of a guidance for the class advisor to kind of remind the class of funds available. Before, was it strictly on the treasurer to be like, hey?
I mentioned that last year.
Like, I mean, what's, the treasurer got elected, and they have some sort of responsibility, don't they? Shouldn't they notice a budget and use it? It's an elected position. I know, I know a lot of times, class officers, it's a, it's not a real, but.
They're kids, so they need guidance. That's part of the reason.
But before, there was no, like, who was, who was putting the money in?
Into accounts?
There was no ledger or any.
We had a bookkeeper.
Okay.
Who was the bookkeeper?
It was the bookkeeper at the middle school, at the high school.
So that position's been cut.
But that, but that was a, an administrative position, is that correct?
No, secretarial position.
It's not a student doing the bookkeeping?
Correct.
That's what I was asking.
Right.
Students don't have that much insight into this. It's done by advisors.
I'm curious what the title treasurer refers to, if there's no bookkeeping whatsoever.
Well, making sure like, class dues, making sure there's how much they're spending.
Even when the treasurer counts the money, the teacher advisors gotta bring it in.
In the classes fund, somebody should have been like, what are we gonna do with that? Hey, guys, we have $1,000.
To me, that's what the advisors' role is, is to give out some guidance.
That's why we need to put, some, some school systems have a timeframe at the end of the year, within six, so many months.
Policy may be actually identified, well, let me ask you this. What, where is it defined roles and responsibilities of a class advisor?
I think it's in the handbook, they have a handbook that defines it.
Maybe we, maybe.
Oh, class advisor or class officer?
The class advisor.
Class advisor.
And again, going back, understanding that these are really just kids.
Yeah, there should definitely be guidance.
And there needs to be that, that supervision. And to me, the advisor, that's part of the roles and responsibilities. There may be supporting people like the bookkeeper, as you were just referencing, that are there, in my opinion, and I mentioned this when this first came up last year, that the advisor should be sitting down with the class officers in January and doing a deep dive. Here's what you have, this is what you've spent, this is where all the money's come from, this is how much we're anticipating, the forecast, typical budgeting, and.
One of the items we're also gonna look at is dues, because what happens is, a lot of the dues are not paid until junior or senior year, so it's hard to anticipate what you have. So for instance, at the end of the sophomore year, you might have $5,000. So it's hard to, you know, and it sounds like dues have gone by the wayside for, you know, many other districts, just because it's, you know, so classes can still fundraise, you know.
Absolutely, but whatever it is, they should be having, there should be a regular cadence for sit downs with the class officers, so that we don't get to the end of the year where it seems like there's a whole lot of questions, and people seem to be not aware. If we can be proactive, we, identifying the advisor that, that, hey, part of your responsibilities, and there's meeting notes, very similar to what we have our clerk doing right here, they're documenting. So if anybody comes back and says, oh, we weren't aware of this, oh no, we've got meetings for these, since January, these six meetings were held, and we talked about it specifically.
Yeah, I agree with the notes.
Yeah, and just making sure everybody understands how to support the policy, the new policy that our policy committee is gonna put together, to ensure this doesn't happen anymore. And again, just putting a policy in place isn't gonna fix it, but making sure that we are getting the people, the right people proactive and engaged with the class officers, then we don't get any more emails like we're getting now, amongst other things.
Was this year one for the, what's the, the online payment, we're now all digital?
School bucks.
School bucks. Is this year one or year two?
Like, year one, one, yeah.
This is, okay, so it wouldn't help from last year, but from, moving on, if this were to happen, and we didn't get rid of dues, and you had a surplus, now with the system in place, since everything is transacted, we could actually go back and say, well, we have this surplus, this student paid for a yearbook, this student paid for prom, because they paid through this. So you could issue refunds based on what you know they've paid, if, but it doesn't help us from last year.
Okay, so our current policy states that it goes back to the, to the class, but we don't want to do that, because it's a lot of money per the advisement to give to one person, correct?
Well, it's not that we don't want to do that. I checked with all the, kind of the.
It's the right way to do it.
Right, but I guess if what they're requesting is an individual check to each family, so that follows our policy, so.
Some people didn't go to prom, some people went and buy yearbooks.
Doesn't matter, it's a class fund.
It's their, it's their, so I guess my point is, why are we waiting to develop a new policy to then give them their money, if our current, what they're asking follows our current policy?
The policy says return to the class. So when I contacted our attorney, our auditor, CASBO, to say, it says to the class, you know, not to the individuals, they all.
Your checks.
Yeah.
Right, but it's, I don't know.
I would think if the officers, because I know we did this with Amanda's graduating class, I was the advisor, the officers went to the bank, they opened up an account, and you called it the class of 2001, and you had more, and it's not just one signature, right?
Two of them.
Two signatures, and that's what was going on historically without a problem, the money gets deposited in that account. That's giving it to the class. I wouldn't want to write a check to an individual student.
The check was, were into the class of East.
But if they have an account in a bank, and we write it there, we could clear this up. Otherwise, you know, everyone's getting antsy that we're not holding the money, we're trying to do something with it.
Yeah, because it's, I guess it's been a year, they're asking for the money, by the time policy meets, we develop, we're talking about months from now.
So then the class of 2001 used that for reunion?
Yes.
And then?
We only had like.
And then maybe made a gift, or maybe didn't make a gift?
They made a gift.
Did whatever they wanted to do, but at some point, it closed out.
Yeah, because, I mean, there wasn't almost $9,000 in it, there was a thousand.
A thousand bucks. Eventually, though, it closed out.
Yes, so within the past five years.
And it didn't close out by, you know, refunding monies that weren't used by individual students.
Well, no, all the money got used.
Didn't go to prom, didn't get a yearbook, whatever.
No, 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 just got used for.
Yeah, for people listening, it's not, it's not so easy. I mean, I contacted my class president from back 10 years ago, where we had money left over, his response was, well, you know, why don't we just donate to the class? But he doesn't have the authority to do that either. He doesn't have authority to tell me, just donate it to the class.
Well, I suspect, I mean, I suspect if, I mean, that would be the easiest thing. If they could do that, then they can write the checks to each individual thing, and then they can, their leftover, they could use for a reunion, or whatever they want, it's their money. I just feel like it's been, by the time policy meets, we develop a new policy, we follow that policy, I mean, these people are our community members, these are friends, these are, these are kids that want their money back. I don't know what we're waiting for. I'm just gonna be honest.
And I think the new policy should address.
You're talking about two different things. The policy is one thing, moving forward, and then addressing what has come to our attention.
Yes, this is separate from what we should be doing in policy, that's my belief.
The new policy should address end of year, and maybe a reunion is the only, like, there should be no carryover. The funds raised, because all the fundraisers, I donate a lot, especially, like, any events, we try and, we make a donation, we do the raffles, but it's always under the assumption it's gonna be used for school events, school activities. Never once have I think I'm gonna be paying for a reunion.
I agree with Ricky.
Right.
The policy should address it, you should have a zero balance, you either, if you have access, and you can't figure out a way, then you do a gift, you do a picnic table.
Right, because if you have that much money, you don't need to be doing dues.
Exactly, but there should not be a balance carried over, and then putting money into an account for a party or something.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
I agree, but that's a policy issue. Right now, we're talking about the class, last year's class, of getting them their money.
Right.
I agree with all that, yeah.
I feel like this email has nothing to do.
And gifts used to be a tradition, that they left a gift, and that seems to have disappeared, but.
So is, I'm sorry, is there a separate account right now for the class of 2023?
Mm-hmm.
And they have an account balance that's, you know, substantial enough, right?
We have, we have a separate account balance for classes of 2008 through 2023.
2008. Well, why would we have that if we didn't have a policy in effect till 2017 that said that we're gonna return us to?
Well, we don't know, John, it's just, that's the way it's been, that we've discovered.
No, I know, and I spend, no, this is like the fourth time we've done this.
How many graduated last year?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember.
In the mid 50s?
I think it was a little bigger last year.
60?
Yeah.
I mean.
So 9,000, if it was 60, even numbers, 150, 150 ahead.
But to the point of what our existing policy is, does the existing policy preclude having their class officers create a bank account?
No, it says it goes to the class.
In their class name, that we would just.
We would actually be following.
But that's the only way, you could probably give it to the class, is probably why we did it, so how else do you give it to the class?
So can't we do that, if that's our existing policy, can't we authorize doing that? And then whatever they want to do.
Create to the class, so my question.
To a bank account, for the class.
So they would go to the bank right here, I mean, I, I mean, I, I know one of the officers, I can tell them exactly what we did, we went to the bank, we, the check, we opened up an account called East Grammy class of 2001, we put two of our names on the account, and then Miss Yancy wrote us a check to the class of 2001, we deposited the check, then it was there, and then if they want.
She must have been taxed on that then, because that's what.
I never got a.
Well, whatever, keep, I'm trying to keep going with how you disperse those funds.
Well, and then we used the money for like reunion, and stuff like, and then a few hundred of it was left over, and we didn't use it for so long that it went to the state of Connecticut.
It is true, okay.
So they.
I mean, I will check with the auditors tomorrow, if they, if it's, if they're okay with that.
The auditor?
Well, the auditor, because that's who audited our, you know, all of our accounts.
So what if they say no?
Well, ask them why they approved it before.
Well, we've been doing, that's what I mean, like.
We've never dispersed, like, funds to each individual class.
No, we haven't, but back, back in the day.
But Lynn, the only reason they're asking for that is because it's been a year, they're waiting for their money, so they're trying to find a way that makes it less, because they understand you can't write a check for $9,000 to a student. So they're trying to say, okay, then at least just give us back our dues. That, that's how they're phrasing it, which I, I could understand. So.
How much are dues?
I have no idea now.
Between probably 40 and 50 a year, maybe 55.
Through all years, through four years each?
I think it's lower, maybe freshman, sophomore year, and.
And eliminating those, Ricky, would, it would help, because a lot of kids wait till their junior or senior year, and then they pay all of it, and that could have been part of the problem, why the classes don't know how much money they have at the end of the year, because all of a sudden, everyone's paying dues, so they could go to the prom, and they could get a yearbook. And so you've gone four years, and all of a sudden, all this money comes in, that you didn't create a plan for before. So the dues, and some kids never want to pay them.
If the dues that they paid exceed that divided by the class size, then it's, give it back, simply.
Right, and I think, right, we all definitely agree with that, for sure. I think it's, I just feel like we've been talking about this class, we have been for a year, so I personally, and I think many people would like to see a resolution.
I've offered what my guidance was. I mean, I didn't know the answer, so I had to find what I would consider an expert. So I went to CASBO, I went to our auditor, I went to our attorney, then I spoke with some other districts, who do the same thing, and I said, how do you do this? I mean, the guidance was all the same for all of them. But I will, I'll go back and say, can it just be a class of whatever? Can more than one person, is that, can they determine to be perhaps like a trustee for the group?
I mean, couldn't that be like their elected officers, if they can get three of their elected officers?
They have them, they're all home right now.
Yeah, so if they're all there, those elected officers, then they are the class of, and then wouldn't it be off of our books and off of our plate, so they could?
Mary, how hard is it to do a mail merge of a list of addresses and send 60 checks? A mail merge?
Ricky, we were told not to do that. We were told that we can't.
It's not the class.
But if we, do we have a record of them paying their dues? Because then it's just a refund of something they already paid. We don't have to look at it as a class fund, it's a refund of dues.
And that's how they worded it.
What if, what if somebody benefited, what if somebody benefited from the dues they paid, versus someone who didn't, benefiting the dues that they paid? It's a person who didn't go to prom, the person that didn't get a yearbook, that person should get reimbursed their dues, under, under your theory. But if I went to prom, and if I got a yearbook, why should I get the same check that someone that didn't take advantage of the monies that he or she paid in? That doesn't make any sense.
You'd have to sit there.
You'd have to sit there, and you'd have to look. You'd have to say, okay, there's this balance of whatever, and, you know, Rick and Lisa went to the prom, and Amanda, Mark didn't, you'd have to, which I'm sure you can trace it or track it.
Yeah, we don't want to be in that business. We don't have people to help trace it and stuff. That's why if it's approved, you give it to the bank.
I'm sorry, so across the state, public schools, this, this system has always worked, where you're paying, quote unquote, class dues? I can see raising funds for prom, and I can see, I can see raising funds, you know, doing bake sales, and car washes, and doing that, and there's no, you know, there's no dues, I'm not paying out of my pocket. We're, we're collecting money that's being contributed by the community, and that money isn't mine, it's my class's, and if we don't use those funds, then it goes, you know, it goes to a class gift.
I think one of the suggestions is to get in front of the class dues.
Yeah, absolutely.
Why are we shaking people down for?
Oh, yeah, they are shaking, but I think in high school, I've never heard of that two words.
Okay, so going back to recapping, so you're gonna ask the guidance, if they say no to that, then do we have to change the policy? And if the policy's changed, then they'll agree to it?
Well, we can't, our, our policy can't go against what our auditor is saying.
So if they say no, what, how do these, how do they get their money? I guess that's been the question for a year. So if they say no, how do they get their money?
If they say no to what?
If they say no to the idea of the class of 2023, with their names on it, the bank account, then what do we do? Like, can we go against the auditor's suggestion? Like, what do we do? I guess is, I think, I'm sure.
But we have, remember, this is.
No, I don't, I just think, so what do you do? So this money, they never get it back? Is that what happens? Is that what happens?
Well, that's.
I can only show our, our trend over years. This, this process has been in existence. We have the funds. We have every fund from the class of two thousand eight on. I have reached out to all of our advisors from those classes. The vast majority, with maybe exception of two or three, are still in our school district to get officers' names to figure out what the class would like to do with their funds. I'm, I'm trying to kind of repair something from fifteen years ago and have a better process.
I know this is on you, I'm just saying, but, but if you're reaching out to them, they're telling you what they want to do with it. We're not doing that though, so. I, I must be confused.
Because, no, no, I, I, I think, I mean, to me, I get it. It sounds like it should be simple. And if they, and if we can do that by a class of twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-one or whatever class, you know, you were. I, I, there was an individual who graduated from here. He also got the money, put it in a high yields account, but he got taxed on it. He said he, that, that didn't work well. That wasn't what, you know.
Right.
Should have happened. So unless.
It wasn't his money.
I'm sorry?
It wasn't his money.
Right.
Yeah, you're gonna get. You're gonna get.
Normally you open a E I, E I N number and go open a bank account. So, so I think what we've been told we can't do is that we can't give a check to the class officers or we can't cut a check to every single person that paid dues.
As, as individuals.
What have we been told we can do? What's, okay.
So the options have always been, if you wanted to contribute to either a class gift, charitable donation, like one policy I read with the person who did the Casbo workshop, after the five-year mark, if it's not used, it goes into their school scholarship account. You can roll it down to another class if you wanted, or you can put it in, take it into a, you know, a nonprofit and then you use it for, it's still supposed, you're still supposed to guarantee you're going to use it for a charitable or educational purpose.
So if we get together and have a meeting about what our options are, then is, are then we able to present that to this class of twenty twenty-three?
I think, I think the nonprofit is, I, I've never opened a nonprofit. I was going to research it, see if I could assist with that.
P T O, it's a ton of work. There's no way they're going to be able to do that. It took us almost a year to open our nonprofit. And it's a ton of paperwork. It's account, we had to pay an account. I mean, you know, that's not an option.
You don't want to do it.
That's.
Well, I'm just telling you what I was.
That wasn't the only option that Missy just stated then.
No, I know what you're saying. That option, I can't imagine they're going to want.
Okay.
Correct. So I, I will go back and ask the auditors if we can, if it could simply be one or, not one, maybe two or three class officers then.
Yeah, if they call it East Grammy class of twenty twenty-three, we write a check and they approve that, then we're done. If they don't.
And then we would apply that for all of the classes going back to two thousand eight.
Then the policy committee has to look at the policy for next time.
What's your concern?
In there for that period of time.
Every class has a surplus except for one class. The lowest is like five hundred and one class has like twelve or thirteen thousand. Probably there's a range between four and five, six thousand each class.
Yeah, the only, the only class we have an issue with right now is last year's class trying to get their money. So the policy part, you know, we can work on. We just want to get them their money.
That's, that's.
I don't, I'm not looking to keep anyone's money.
Oh, I know.
I just have to follow.
We're using it for anything.
Right.
I have to just follow what I have been told I can do. And I, I have no problem going back and say, can we, I mean, I've asked several times. You know, I, I, we want to give the, the funds back or do something with it so that it, we can close out all of these accounts.
So why don't we work the policy committee, some committee meeting this way? Why don't we start with this issue, the class of twenty twenty-three? You can tell the policy committee all the options and then we can decide how to present it to the class. They can do with their options.
But why is that even a policy committee and not just the board?
All right, well, we can all.
Right now, I thought we were waiting for Mary to find out because, yeah, we can waive, we can waive a policy with two thirds vote and do what we want. But let's find out if we can do what we want to do.
Okay.
If we can legally do that. And at least that gives us an option. We're telling people that's what we're trying to do. And if we can't do that, then we'll look at the next step, what we're going to do next. Yeah, because the policy is going to really help us down the road. But right now, this money goes back to last year's graduating class and we've been getting it since last year this time.
So my point is, whatever we're doing, whether it be policy committee or board of that special meeting to figure out what we're going to do, let's just expedite this piece and do it first. And I'm sorry, Bob, can you repeat what Mary's looking into?
Mary's looking into if a class opens up a bank account with two to three.
Yes.
Names on it and says a class of whatever, then we can write a check to that bank account. Give a check to them. And then what happens is, you know, we, we've given it, our policy says we've given it to the class. And that's probably the best legal way.
If you give it to the officers, that's giving it to the class. Yeah.
Well, we're giving it to the bank, their, their account. I wouldn't want to give it to Lynn Landleena, but if Lynn Landleena is a name on the checking account as class president with John Welsh, we write a check to that account.
Then you're putting pressure on a couple of nineteen-year-old or twenty-year-old.
I think they want, they want, they want it. They're asking for it. They wanted it.
No, I know. Let me, let me, let me follow it through. So what you really need to do, if that's what you're going to do, is you're going to need to do an audit of the class of twenty twenty-three. You're going to need to see who during their four years paid their dues in full. You're going to need to see who went to the prom.
To them or them.
Right, but for them.
They could decide to give a bounty to each and.
They can do it however they want.
That's what I'm just doing, John. That's not our money. That's just putting.
I can tell you what they're going to, they're going to do exactly what they're asking.
They're not going to have half the contacts of, I know it's a small town, but half the people they're not going to get in tou, in touch with. And then, then they're going to be left with four thousand dollars.
Well, we were keeping.
Well, they said they would donate it. They did say that.
We were keeping track of these funds for four years, weren't we? Aren't we still?
How hard is it this?
We are.
No, that's.
Mary, how hard is it to do a trust with sixty beneficiaries?
Difficult.
Okay.
So, so Mary, for next, do you think realistically you'll have that answer for next meeting?
Yeah, she should have.
Okay, so then we can, so I'll be on the agenda for next week.
So should I, so we still need to schedule a policy subcommittee?
Yes.
So.
For moving forward.
For moving forward, correct.
That graduation. That's it.
Yeah, hopefully Amanda, there won't be, hopefully it won't be an agenda item that we're just going to do that.
Oh, okay, so we don't even need to.
Talk about it again. If she can do it, hopefully they can do it.
Okay.
That should be the goal, Rick.
Yeah.
It should be the goal.
What's the goal? Zero balance and graduation.
But I think.
Well, that's.
Fuck your reunions though. I mean, was it?
That's up to the policy.
Whoever wants to compliment is reunion.
I guess the same thing with dues. I want your yearbook paid for.
The policy committee should give them a time limit to do something. And if not, it goes to a whole idea of class dues and.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I think we're going to agree to travel.
And sure, raise funds.
Okay, comments from visitors.
Wait a second, I just wanted to, what about this Thursday for policy committee?
Okay.
I can do this Thursday.
I'll be with them. You guys can do it.
Uh, Missy. I would be available during the eighth grade dinner dance, which is between six and eight.
Okay.
So I could meet at like six thirty. It's the eighth grade dinner dance after graduation?
Yeah, but still Tuesday's a school.
Yeah.
Yeah. They have.
Last day of school is Friday.
Oh, okay.
I can do that.
All right, I'll send something out for this Thursday for the policy committee.
Anyone else?
Uh, I just wanted to clarify, are we meeting for budget subcommittee five o'clock next week or five thirty? Five thirty, board of that offices, Missy? Um, next, you're talking before the next meeting, not next. I'm sorry, I absolutely.
Five thirty is what the minute said last week.
Okay, so five thirty and we just need a location.
We'll get a location for that.
Okay.
Okay, item seven, comments from visitors, seeing none, so I have a motion for adjournment.
Yes. The policy meeting is this Thursday. Where's the location?
Missy's going to let us.
Sorry. No, 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 no. Oh, no. That wasn't my, that, I was not heavy side on you. I was heavy side myself for not thinking of that. Um, Missy, do board of that offices work for this Thursday for policy subcommittee meeting?
Sure.
And you said you're available from six to eight, Lisa? Yes. What do we make? Six fifteen-ish. I think what the dancers would have. What do we make at six fifteen, six fifteen Thursday? Board of that offices? Six fifteen, board of that office. I'm fine with that.
So do you want, I'm sorry, Bob, do you want to put on for item six B, do you want to put on report on policy committee? So if there was a policy change that was agreed to by the policy committee, we would at least have something to do as a first read. Because theoretically, we do a first read and do a second read and then act on the second read.
Right, because we kind of want, yeah, we want a new policy for this current class of two thousand twenty-four, right?
So if you want to move it, if you want to move it forward, I think we should put it down.
Yeah, we'll put it down.
And then I think that, um.
Just confirming, this year's class has spent their money?
Um, they're, they're working on it.
Okay.
I, you, you have to again realize when class dues come in late senior year.
That's the problem.
They're budgeting everything, you know, with, and then they're trying to.
They're rid of dues.
It's going to take a year or two without doing dues to then catch up. So it could be.
Actually, no, without doing dues will be very easy because then you have exactly, you know what.
Right, but saying like the current even tenth graders have some dues.
Creates the problem.
Some saying, starting next year, if we don't do dues, then that class won't have an issue. So like.
And that's not a policy, by the way. There's no policy that says dues. It's just been a practice.
Right, right, right.
Mark made a motion, Lynn seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that for adjournment?
Yes.